Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, I guess, at this point. We are reconvening back into open session. We met earlier in closed session and there was nothing to report. So, we met with our legal counsel. And now, calling this meeting your order, and we're going to start with the pledge. Please rise, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dee, you want to ask a few roll call?
Counselmember Connie?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Merrick Solis?
Here. All right. Public communication, the council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person, so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Text for dive matters and avoid repetition whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter. The mayor may request the spokesperson may be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council commission boards and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action will be taken. And again, just a reminder for everybody whether you're here or in TB land, you could come in here and want us to build a giant tower in the middle of town, we'll listen to you, but we're not going to take action on it until it gets agendized, so. Right, is there anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak? All right. Hearing done. Public matters, adopt a resolution approving a raise in the allotment to council member, either by raise or pay an auto allowance.
Yes, I Stephanie Gerbrandt-Serra, City Manager. Today, we're here to look at the issue of city council salaries or auto allowance. And Government Code Section 36516.2A discusses how much a general law city such as Willets can pay its council members for service on the council. And for a city of our size, that limit is $300 per month. The cities of Fort Bragg and Lakeport both pay $300 per month for all of their council members and have for some time. The city of Ukiah is a slightly bigger city, pays each council member a little bit more, and that's $460 per month, which is the maximum for a city of that size. Now, the city of Willets currently only pays each council member $100 per month and $200 to the mayor. Staff went back and looked at the history of what council members have been paid in Willets, and we found out that more than 10 years ago, actually 12 years ago, a council was paid more than they are now. And the city council was paid 300, the mayor received $300 per month, and each council member received $150 per month. In 2008, that was lower, and that was lower to, the mayor was then given $200 a month, and then $100 a month to each council member. Shortly after that, the council just canceled the allotment altogether, so the council members were not paid at all. And then, a few years ago, 2013, the pay was then raised again to what it is now, $200 for the mayor and $100 for each council member. It has been proposed to bring the city council allowances to the level of Lakeport and Fort Bragg, which are very similar to us, either by increasing the regular allowance or by granting a special auto allowance of $200 for each council member to account for all of the time, the significant travel that each council member has to undertake when they take on this duty. I know our council members are extremely busy. They regularly travel to Ukiah, sometimes they travel to Eureka. They have to take time off from their jobs if they're working, they have to pay for their own gas, it is, they have, they take time researching issues and meeting with constituents. They spend actually quite a few hours every week. And so, staff wrote this report because we're concerned attracting people into local government service has always been a challenge, as it requires long hours of meetings and takes away from the earning potential of each person choosing to give their time to public service. Ensuring that the allotments given to public officials are reasonable is important to ensure diversity of incomes to the city council, and it is thought that public service should not be limited to those who can afford to do so, and widening the pool of those who can serve, some say will help contribute to a representative local government. So, this staff, this report is in front of you now, and please discuss.
Well, I'll start out, then I'm going to hand it to you guys. I, in addition to the stipends that we currently get, we also are providing health insurance by the city, in the interest of full disclosure. I know there was an interest by some members of the council to bring this up, and so I'm going to, before I speak any further, I'm going to go ahead and let those that want to speak on it, go ahead and speak, and so do I have something you want to speak on?
Yeah. I'm a little uncomfortable going from $100 a month stipend to $300 a month. I can see that it is helpful to, you know, to offer a little bit more for council members who are, you know, maybe can't afford to basically donate a lot of their time. But it's true that the health benefit is also a very valuable thing for us as council members, and costs the city quite a bit as well. The other part of this is, I just want to say that travel allowances are, I would be very uncomfortable to accept $200 a month for travel, since I only have one meeting a month in Ukiah. My other meetings are here, and some of us don't have any meetings outside of Willets, and others do. Others have, you know, maybe they have to go to Sacramento, or they have to go over to the coast for the MTA meetings. So, I would prefer that we have a, something like, maybe as much as $200 a month as our stipend, and then a travel allowance as needed. In other words, if I'm traveling a lot in one month, I can put in my mileage and get reimbursed, but not just a gift of that much money when I don't actually need it. Round trip to Ukiah is, I think, about $35, counting, you know, the per mile thing, not what it actually costs me in gas. So, I would be uncomfortable taking a $200 gas allowance, auto allowance.
I don't feel uncomfortable at all with it, because I have, I had a business for years, and when you take a half a day or a whole day off from your work and go to a meeting, I don't feel that a couple hundred dollars is going to hurt, but it sure does help, help anybody that's in business. And I know that everybody that's in business, which there's two of us now that are in business, I was in business, but I still have a little bit of the business yet, I think that it's worth it to get the different cross-sections of people. I mean, there are people that would maybe really like to be on the council, but they can't afford to be on the council. And so, I think that, that the $300 is what I think is right, and Madge, if you don't feel right about it, all you have to do is write a check back to the city and give it back to the city.
Sure. I supported Larry in putting this on the agenda, because, for one, I don't think the public's aware of the fact that we receive health insurance and $100 stipend. I've heard many comments assuming that we make much more than we do. And also, I think that sometimes people connect money with value, and what we do up here, you can't, can't put a dollar on it. I don't think anybody's here giving their time and their energy because of money. We're here because we're passionate about our community. But I do think that it is discouraging, and I have heard that other people have not run for office because of the time that it does take from work, $300, $200 more a month, to be honest, is going to have no bearing on whether or not I choose to serve my community on the council, and won't have a significant impact on my monthly income. But I do think that it sets a precedent where it does allow some other people that maybe are on the fence about whether or not they want to make this commitment. I don't care whether or not it is an increase in the allotment, or it's a mileage expense, but having served on many committees, and some of us have served on many boards and committees, you can travel quite a bit. There's been times when you attend to one to three meetings throughout Mendocino County in a week, and you're driving around, you're taking the time off work, but you're also using your car, you know. I have meetings in Point Arena and Fort Bragg and Ukiah, and I know Jerry travels even further for some of the committees that he's on. I think that I would be comfortable with a simple reimbursement for mileage if that's the case. But there should be something, not so much for me or for our council, but to encourage others to seek public service.
I am not opposed to increasing the pay for council members. I think anybody who I've mentioned the $100 salary to sort of snorts, really, that's it. It's a lot of work being on council. I think we're all happy to do it, we've chosen this, we're honored to serve, but it should be realistic, a realistic compensation for the hours that are put in. However, I am uncomfortable with voting on a resolution that would affect me. I just was seated in December, I've attended, this is my third council meeting. For me to vote on a raise for myself is a little embarrassing. So, I would appreciate a resolution that offered to increase the salary for council members that would take effect at the next election, so people who are running know what the position is going to pay and have some incentive. And those of us who are here now, who took the job knowing what the compensation was, sit tight. And if we run again, then we're compensated when we get elected again by the public. As far as the auto allowance goes, the two committees that I'm on are here in Willets. I don't travel. I traveled last week to Sacramento for the city, but I was, that was paid for by the city. So, I think if you're going to do it, just call it a salary, call it good, and don't tinker around with the auto allowance, because not all of us need an auto allowance.
I'll just say that I have, to me, I kind of felt a little uncomfortable, because I retired, and then I didn't do this for the money, because as you can see, we're not making a lot. But I do find, I do pick and choose where I go to meetings sometimes because of the cost, depending on where I'm going. I do, as part of Lega Cities, usually travel on the North Coast meetings, and that's quarterly, but I'm also on, they tapped me to be on a Lega Cities Policy Committee, so I was in Sacramento a week and a half ago, but I probably wasn't going to go to the, I think there's one down in Southern California, just because of the cost associated with either a flight or do something, because I, it comes out of my pocket if I did that at that point, unless there's some other training that we dip into our city council, I guess there's a, yeah, there's a small amount of money set aside for some travel for the, and that's what we paid for ready to go to the class and stuff, so.
Interestingly, though, when we went, there was no travel.
Well, we didn't get travel, we got our hotel and...
Yeah, they didn't, I didn't get travel.
Yeah, so we, like, I paid for parking the other day in Sacramento, and as it turns out, I either have to pay for lunch or report it that the Lega Cities provided. But I thought, well, what I spent in gas and what I spent in parking for the day in Sacramento probably outdid what I'll report, so I thought, well, the free lunch wasn't so free, but, so to speak, for something I sat on. And I'll report out later on some of the stuff I brought back, but, so that's kind of my thing, is I, you know, I could probably do more if I, when I was a, when I was police chief and I went to training, I got auto allowance in the sense that I had a police car to drive where I, where I was reimbursed for my travel. And that's my only quandary in this, is, again, I didn't do it for salary as much as I did it to serve, but I don't want to go in the hole traveling on city business if I'm either not going to be provided a car or limit what I go to, just because of economics. So, that's, that's what I wanted to add.
I want to ask a question. Is there any, I'm sorry, any budget or provision for reimbursement of travel expenses for things like going to Sacramento or going to Santa Rosa? I guess I'm going to have to do that if I get appointed to this other committee and things of that sort.
Yes.
So, that's on a per mile basis, right? So, for those of us who do longer travel as part of our committee assignments or agencies that we're on the board of, we can, can get reimbursement if we want to.
Up to whatever the dollar amount is in the budget, and I'm sorry, I didn't put that.
So, with that in mind, I would like to make a motion that we increase the stipend, if we want to call it that, the monthly to $200, and make sure that we have an allowance that's sufficient for travel expenses for those who need to be reimbursed for out-of-city travel.
And is that $200 for the council members, and then what for mayor?
Yes, any additional for mayor? $200 for everybody, for all five, instead of $100.
Can you specify the procedure for the reimbursement? Is it the, is it the maximum of the, I'm just, not that I truly care, but I just want to make for accuracy, that we all have, we are understanding the motion. So, are you saying that you would submit for up to $100 per month for actual?
Travel expense.
Travel expense, and it's reimbursable, up to $100? Is that what the motion is?
And the city has a mileage policy, and, but then it would be travel as approved, I am assuming that we would have, so, for example, if you decided...
I'm going to Afghanistan and Afghanistan.
Yeah, yeah, so if it was something like that, where Madge says, I'm going to do a...
Fact-finding.
Fact-finding trip to Afghanistan, and here we go.
You got $100 bucks.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here. I know that we do have some more money in the budget for conferences for council members, and I think that that should be a little more generous, because there are important conferences that maybe some people should go to in Sacramento. I don't know what that was. Maybe Sacramento or San Diego, something like that, and I would hate to limit that for $100, because I, if we are able to do so, I would like council to do that, so I hate to have a limit.
To not confuse the stipend with the travel to those.
Yeah, I think that maybe we leave the travel, and that's just according to whatever we feel comfortable with in the budget, and we could just go ahead and budget the way we have been, and not have that in a resolution, but maybe concentrate on salaries.
I find that change.
Can I ask for some clarification?
Administratively.
Do you intend that your resolution or your motion would kick in in February of 2019, or do you intend it for future councils?
I'm okay with having it kick in at the next, you know, next month, simply because I think we do have the authority to set our own salaries, and I didn't like what the Board of Supervisors did, but I think it is our job to look at the budget, and that includes setting our own salaries. So, I'm, my motion would be to take effect in February.
Of this year.
What is the motion?
It's to increase the monthly stipend for city council members for all five of us to $200 a month.
With an auto allowance of $100?
No, I think what Stephanie, yes, Stephanie said is that that is still...
You guys can apply for reimbursement, and you get to do that, and we can process that. And when you go on long trips, you should get reimbursement, and I would encourage that, and I would encourage budgeting for that, because that's a positive thing that you do.
So, during the budget process, we could say, look, we were going to budget for two council members to go to X or...
Yes, and keep into mind that there's a certain number of meetings, and we deal that through the budget process, and if we're tight, it's low, if we're not tight, it's higher.
And that's something, we could also reopen this at the budget if we get the new figures and we get told.
Absolutely. And that's for, but that's just for reimbursement, for the salaries, we have to do it this way.
Okay. So, we have a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
Oh, we didn't open it up to the public yet.
Okay.
That's true.
Well, at this point, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Our finance director might be a good person to speak at this point.
No, it's a little unclear, because it's going to, to prove, is it so, is increased to $200, right?
Yes.
So, so mayor is, and the council member is all $200, so there is no difference.
Yes.
And then we will do the travel reimburse according to reimbursement policy, the travel policy, and the mayor's same way.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Does it affect February?
Well, it didn't have a motion, it didn't have a second to the motion.
We don't have a second yet, but that's where we're at.
All right, all right. I just want to make sure I'm clear. All right, thank you.
So, in view of that, I would suggest that we wait until the budget in June to set a different rate, and then bring it up at that time, rather than do something now.
All right, so you're retracting your, you're retracting your motion?
Well, if it's not seconded, it's not in play, and so I would...
I just wanted to hear from the public thing for a second.
Sure.
So, so her motion is, are you pulling it, or are you...
I'm just saying, it's not a motion. The motion that I made isn't seconded, so it's not on the table right now. And personally, I would be more comfortable revisiting this at our budget time rather than taking action tonight. If there's another motion, we can...
Can I ask one clarifying question? What is our, our policy on approval? Who approves, or is it based on if you're attending, for example, Jerry serving on Lega Cities, Lega Cities has an, has an event, he goes to it, is it an automatic approval because that's a board-approved event? Or do we have to go through this long negotiation process? There's no discretionary, it's just simply this is the way it is? That's the policy?
It's for the boards.
Okay, then a second to motion.
You're seconding my motion?
Yes. Okay, we've got a motion.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Anybody else from the public want to speak on this? So, could you reread the motion?
The motion is to increase the stipend to $200 a month for all five of us.
Okay. And then...
Effective February.
Effective February.
Okay. I guess call for the vote.
Counselmember Connie?
No.
Audrey?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Merrick Solis?
Kind of torn. You know what, I'll, I'll say yes, because at this point, I'll use it for gas money, so.
And actually, yours won't change, because it's $200, you're the mayor, so it's...
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to, I don't have that resolution in this pocket, so I will prepare that resolution and bring it in a future council meeting for consecutive honor.
All right. And then, you know, as part of the budget process, just want to remind you that we can look at conferences or things that we think is, that are important, that all of you can bring, or if there's something that comes up, just like staff, and say, hey, there's a lot of value, because we did want to put, we put money in there for sending you council members to that training. The year me and Suprina were going to go, they, somebody dropped the ball, we didn't get to go, so we actually ended up going the following year.
Yeah, we had to wait a year.
And then Madge went then also, and so, there was some value being there at the Lega Cities, talking with other, other folks in our, especially when you run into folks from similar-sized cities, it's, it's kind of nice when we're all talking the same problems. And obviously, the big folks, you kind of hear from them, and, I don't know, I take away more from talking to similar-sized cities and what they're going through, and how they've dealt with things, and so, that's important.
It can be challenging that council is limited to the type of networking and outreach that we're able to do, because we don't really budget to, to support ourselves educationally. We make sure that our city staff hopefully is taken care of, but council doesn't spend any money on making sure that, that we are fully abreast of everything that's going on. And so, it's important to, to make sure that we're investing in ourselves as good leaders.
All right, I guess now we're on item 3B, consideration of resolution authorizing a third amendment to the agreement with the Regional Government Services for Financial Services. Which, no, third amendment to the agreement with Regional Government Services for Financial Services.
And I'll go ahead and present that. Stephanie Gerbrandt-Serra, City Manager. We are recommending that the city council authorize a third amendment to the contract with RGS. RGS is our financial consultant. During the last year and a half, we had some very challenging times, because we did not have a finance director, we were extremely short-staffed, and we were sort of racing to catch up, and RGS helped us a great deal, and supplied, Celia Peterson is our consultant, to help us through the budget process, through the audit process, and through some very difficult accounting processes. We are very fortunate to have hired a phenomenal new finance director, and we're really happy that she's here. However, we do have some loose ends that need to be sort of taken care of. We also have some transitional work to do. Some of the loose ends include, there's a, there have been some sewer billing, because we were so short-staffed, we did have an irregularity with our sewer billing. Celia has taken that over, she's about halfway through reconciling the sewer billing. We have some other folks who have come up and sort of questioned some sewer billing from the past, so she is taking a good, hard look at that. She's helping June with the transitional process of learning our systems, and we do have an antiquated financial software, and so that is a little bit challenging to sort of learn and get on the ground with. There is another issue that Celia is also having to deal with right now, and she's sort of the, the point person on, and that's our ongoing, we have an ongoing settlement with Brooktrails, and so we are looking at the wastewater treatment plant allocation calculations, which are so incredibly complicated that Celia is trying to get to the bottom of those, and right now, she is working with consultants to reconcile that, so that we can get to some conclusion in our settlement. We think that it's important that she stay on for the next 12 months, just as an as-needed basis. We're just putting $25,000 in the, in that for occasional services, but it's mostly sewer billing and the Brooktrails lawsuit, financial assistance in which that's for. And so, we are asking for an extension of the contract for 12, I think December 31st of 2019, for the end of this year, not to exceed 25 additional $1,000, to bring the total contract to $250,000, that we've already expended most of the existing money in that contract.
So, Stephanie, this is, reading this, this is a budget amendment, because we didn't budget for this, is that correct?
We are coming forward with a, with a, an adjustment, and I'm not sure whether we're going to do a mid-year adjustment right now, we are just approving the contract, and we should have actually amended the budget as, well, are we, maybe we're going to wait until the midterm to, we're going to wait for the midterm to adjust the budget at time if you approve this contract? Because that's like, just about to come up, midterm.
Suprina?
A question was, is that you had mentioned that most of the services needed sounded like it had to do with things related to water. Is this coming out of general fund or water?
This is actually general fund, but it's something we can certainly look at, is maybe using some water funds to deal with, because that's a good point.
Anything else? Good.
You know, I just want to say, during our last budget, and back when I was police chief, we seemed like we've been constantly late with our audits, and it seems like it's trailed from one finance director to another, and what I got was that they're swamped, and we need to catch up, and it seems like we get caught up for one thing, and we get behind in other ways. And I had talked to Celia before, I said, hey, any chance you, you want to stay on after we get somebody on board, just so that we can clean up everything we have? It sounds like we've got plenty of work at times, and, you know, I'm just kind of picking her brain, and she says, well, yeah, it's, it's a contract, you guys can amend it, and, you know, and I said, well, and I've been vocal about that, because I want to make sure that we keep up to date with our audits, I mean, we, that's how we ensure that trust with the public and with our fellow entities like Brooktrails, to make sure that what we're doing is correct and up to snuff, and so that's one of the reasons I'm for this. So, I just wanted to state that publicly, that I want to make sure that we get caught up, and that our current finance director gets the help she needs to, so that they're not swamped, to try and get finished up that's been sitting there.
I just also wanted to say for the public that I support this as well. Our new finance director has been with us a relatively short time, she was just introduced a few council meetings back. She's got a big plate, she's fantastic, we're lucky to have her, so this is good to help ease her in, and take some of that load off, so that she can just charge ahead for us.
Madge? Do you want to motion now, or wait for the public?
There, let's open it up to the public. Anybody in the public like to speak here? Anybody in the public like to speak about this? Is quiet.
Make a motion for the staff recommendation. And just want to note that the $25,000, there is a little bit of money left from the previous contract, it hasn't been spent yet.
A small amount.
But it's an on-hourly basis, so we get what we pay for. And it's very important to me also to provide for the transition and support what June is doing, to keep our finances up to date, which they haven't been in the past.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any further discussion?
One more. Just that I want us to be wary. I mean, I support this, don't mistake that at all, but I just want to make sure that we've been adding and adding to the staff to support them. And at some point, the council has to say, okay, you know, we've kind of met our cap. We know we still got some things to deal with, but we can't afford to keep spending some money. And it doesn't look like it's a huge amount, but if we could try to move away from this direction, it would be appreciated.
I absolutely agree. I think that once we get over this kind of hump, now that we actually have a new accountant, we will be flying solo very soon.
And I did ask that during the meeting with City Manager, and just to be reassured that this is a one-time expense, and that once we pass this transition point, we're in good hands with our finance department.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right. Call for the vote?
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Excuse me. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes. All right. No ordinance as to enact, no consent, calendar, information reports, so right to appeal.
We do have a consent calendar.
But it's been pulled.
It was pulled.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we didn't tell them.
Sorry. They pulled the... What was on the consent calendar was city council minutes for the January 9th meeting of this year, and apparently, they weren't ready, so it was pulled, so... And right to appeal, people who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council have the right to review of that decision by court. The city has adopted section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. And I guess nothing under item eight. We don't have anything under the Planning Commission. And just for those of you in TV land out there, we also meet currently as the Planning Commission, but there's nothing on there for us today. And nine, City Manager Reports and Recommendations.
I just have a few things I wanted to talk about. Last Friday, Councilmember Vice Mayor Stransky and I attended the Great Redwood Trail meeting, and I'm going to actually let him talk more about that. I think he'll... Do you want to talk more about that? But I'll let him do that. But it was last Friday, we had a group of stakeholders talking about the future of the... The future of the trail. That was a lot of fun. Wanted to let folks know that... I had mentioned back at the end of last year, that we had, you know, during the fire last fall, we lost a server, and we're down. Our whole IT was down for a while, and it was pretty scary. And we spent quite a bit of money from that. Right now, we're on a virtual server, and we had some IT repairs to do. It turns out, we had some... There was an opportunity to get some money from the State Office of Emergency Services. Looks like we are getting that money, and that will pay for pretty much all of our costs, probably 85% of our costs to have a new server, and to pay for lost staff time and IT time, so that was great. And we're trying to get online with new computers and a new server right now, so bear with us. We also have a new website, if you... We did announce that before, and it's a work in progress, but we're very happy. I was also approached by some folks, a gentleman who is active in the Patonk community here in Willets. And that's also another name for Bowls. And what that is, is a wonderful game used... It's somewhat like bocci ball, but it's French. And it is a thing in Willets that a lot of people participate in. And I was... It was brought to my attention that the city of Willets has a Patonk Court, or a Bowls Court, and it's right near the ball fields. And these folks are interested in donating their time to rehabbing it and refinishing it at no cost to the city. And so I'm starting to talk with them about how they would do that. And I'm excited that we've got a group of people who want to do that. And that's Tim Gregory, who approached me on that. We're starting to think again about music in the park, for some kind of a springing-out-of-winter concert, maybe for the end of April, beginning of May. I've had a lot of requests for bluegrass, roots music, old time. So think about it, an all-day Saturday or Sunday concert, that's just one day, not a series, because, you know, rain. So we're going to pick a day and just do it. I think I spoke about the sewer billing issues that Celia is working on. And then we have an issue that I think that council... I'm going to let Councilmember Connie talk about regarding our crosswalks, our piano-keed crosswalks.
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes. And bike lanes. And I'll start out by saying that all of the, what we call piano keys, Caltrans put them in, and then they told us that they were against California regulations. And so therefore, they have to grind them down and take them away, because they would have to be green, or some other option. So we are going to have those piano keys will be ground down, options to follow. And I'll let Councilmember Connie speak later on that, because she really helped, because she was the actual person with a bike, who actually traveled down them. And I was the first person to do that. It was great. And that's all I have.
All right. Did you want Blair to speak on the Great Redwood?
Sure.
Sure.
I went to this meeting in Ukiah, and it's on the Great Redwood Trail, and I'm really excited about this Redwood Trail. And it starts in Willets and goes to Eureka, and it goes up the rail line, alongside the rail. And you walk, or you can bike, or you can horseback. You can't motorize at this particular time to do that. And the thing that got me excited too, is that the City Manager gave me this packet, and it's a fellow that has... That you can get online, and I don't do that, but she got it for me anyhow. But anyhow, and he hiked half of the trail. And the obstacles that he ran up against were kind of interesting. The one thing that was interesting to me was, and I wish I could find it just offhand, was a picture of the tunnel at Iron...
Iron Mountain?
Iron Mountain, yeah. And it shows, it's a... You go across the trestle, that's got to be a mile long. And then there's a tunnel that is straight, and it's a mile long. And you can just see a little dot, just like a pin, and that's the other end of it. And it's really a neat... I'm just really excited about it, because it's going to put Willets on the map, because everybody that's going to want to do this starts in Willets. And I think that that's, you know, the really neat thing about it. It just... It will help us out financially, plus... Anyhow, you can't see it, but there's just a little pinhole back here, where the end of the tunnel is, after a mile. And he had a lot of trouble with the different tunnels, because they've caved in, and they've half-caved in, and whatever. And there's some 20... Was it 27? 27 tunnels on this portion of the trail, that are going to have to be cleared off. And an interesting thing, and I don't know how much that everybody knows about this, but what we're going to do is have a switch in the trains. We will no longer, after middle of the year, I guess, in February... I mean, in June or July, have the Northern Pacific Railroad anymore. We will have something else. And the state is going to try to buy it out, and to have somebody take a portion of it. Smart is going to take it all the way to Ukiah, and then from Ukiah to Willets is still up for grabs, for whatever is going to happen to it. But anyhow, the trail starts in Willets and goes all the way to Eureka, and along the rail lines. And I just think it's going to be something that everybody's going to want to do. And I just hope I'm around to take the first walk on it. Thank you.
Northern Pacific, you're talking about the NCR, the North Coast?
Yes.
North Coast Railway.
Yeah, that's going to go away.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Oh, okay.
And our... And it was really fun to be able to announce that our Rails to Trails project is going to be a part of that. It's right adjacent to it, and it's going to be right at the point where the Great Redwood Trail starts. Well, it's going to be our trail that we are going to build with our new grant funds that we hope to get in June. So everyone was very excited about that.
Administration, do we have anything?
Yes, I'd like to report out, some months back, Stephanie reported on regarding the Great Race that's going to be here in June. I have recently been in touch with the coordinator. He is on vacation this week. He will be back next week. And we will touch base on exactly what's going to happen, what they're expecting from the city. And then we will go from there with committees and all the good stuff. It's going to be a great event. We're looking.
Okay. And I will be presenting on the 8th, I think it is, Kathy?
On the 5th.
Oh, sorry, the 5th. At Edie's birthday party, she's 111. So we issued a proclamation in honor of her birthday, so apparently, it'll be at the Senior Center. And...
New Year.
Yeah, I think it's New Year. And so kind of our local... Is that Centenarian? Am I calling that right?
Super Centenarian.
Super, Super Centenarian, yeah. See, our very own person there, so that'll be fun to do. Legal? All right. Public safety? Nothing? All right. Anything? Nobody from engineering? All right. Community development? And let's...
Has a couple, Councilman.
Did I forget?
Includes those two items, yeah.
And also...
Just real briefly, we're anxious for January 30th to come. That's when the CTC votes on staff recommendations to fund a number of projects, including our Rails and Trails project. I'm glad to announce that we have no tunnels to deal with on our trail. So that's advantage us. We're working... We're looking for an opportunity to bring Senator McGuire's staff up here, along with some other stakeholders, to have another discussion in Willets about the Great Redwood Trail. And so we'll announce any developments on that. We're putting together a report, well, for the Rails with Trails grant, the funding for the server, these are all things that Jim Robbins, our community development specialist, helps make happen. So we're putting together a grant report that reflects a lot of the work that he especially has been working on. I'm very confident that we made a great decision by opening that position, and that we were very lucky to get that man to come work for Willets. And so I'm hopeful that we can get a report for you in the second meeting in February. And let's see, just some other potential projects. We received a use permit for about 35 apartment units on the north end of town. We're always happy to see people propose new housing in our community. And, you know, certainly, we'll work through the process and come forward with a recommendation for you guys, but that's something to anticipate at some point, too. And...
You have two items? Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Well, one question was, what is the status or the process for the California Conservation Corps project? Does it require a conditional use permit? Is it already formally in the works, or what?
Yeah. The last update I got was that they purchased the land off the East Hill Road. Thank you. Essentially, across from the new hospital, that they're in the process of selecting consultants or engineers to work on the project. And then, as far as the permitting goes, trying to get some clarity on whether them, as the state owning the property and it being a state agency, do they effectively take over CEQA control and become their own lead agency? Certainly, we become an agency that works with them on that. And then, depending on the variety of uses they play, if we did retain CEQA control, then it's possible that some uses may require use permit, but that hasn't been determined yet. There are opportunities to say, well, the main uses are these, and these other uses are minor, incidental, subordinate, too, and that potentially keeps them out of use permit world, but...
Are state agencies somewhat exempt from city processes the way county is, for example? If they... If the county owns something in city, they're not subject to...
You know, they've done their due diligence. They've met with staff on a couple occasions, and they've been very interested in what our local standards are. So I don't have an answer to that question, but the fact that they're interested in them, maybe it's a new point, but...
And one more question, because it came up at EDFC. Are they likely to either participate in helping us with the construction of the Rails to Trails, or with the maintenance? Is that in the...
We had multiple conversations with CCC leadership, and they did commit to helping us build the trail and maintain it. And we actually included that fact in our grant. It was also referenced, I believe, in their support letter.
Okay.
So I think, once they establish those spheres, they'll be teaming up with the city on a number of projects.
The timing of that is such that they would be up and running by the time they're ready to construct?
It might be that the campus is finished the same day as the trail. And then the trail actually is adjacent to their property.
Yeah.
And so we'll probably look to create an entrance off of their property, if that's something that they support, and they've got easy access to help us enjoy it, too.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for asking that. Is now the appropriate time to... Okay. So I wasn't done. And I usually start by saying, good evening, Mayor Gonzalez and council members. Do you see how that works, Councilman McGuire? So you ride a bike, and so now you're the expert in bike lanes. Dusty, have you ever flown in an airplane? Yeah, well, good. Would you go handle all the grants for the airplane? Yeah, okay, I got it. Be careful. So we're looking for authorization to enter into contract for professional services with Placeworks, an amount not to exceed $18,745, to assist in the preparation of the 2019 through 2027 housing element, as well as authorize the City Manager to approve change orders up to a cumulative total of 10% of the total contract. I know we very recently finished the successful adoption of our current housing element. We've been behind, but we're quickly getting caught up. The next update needs to be updated by August 15th, 2019. The certification of the housing element is also dependent on us updating our safety element, which is the next item for discussion, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood there was a connection between those two. We are running out of time to complete the update. As always, the state always finds new and fun things to include in the update, and finds some new challenges for us, as far as showing adequacy for housing opportunities. But it's all in the namesake of dealing with the housing crisis here in California, making sure Willets is doing our part. The folks that are going to be... The key staff members are going to be working on this project, have also assisted in the city in the last two or three housing element updates. Those folks actually switched companies. They were with Michael Baker International, who was formerly PMC, and they're now working with Placeworks here. There's some... You have the standard contract for professional services, the proposal for services, and the resolution in your agenda packet. A few benefits, if we're able to get this housing element updated on time, we then transition to an eight-year cycle. We're on a four-year cycle now, so we wouldn't have to do the housing element again for another eight years. We remain eligible for community development block grants, which is something that staff has spoken to you about in the past. There's also another potential benefit. One of the advantages of the annual planning conference that the council so generously lets me go to every year, is I get to interact with a lot of folks at the state level. Ben Metcalf is... Ben Metcalf is the head for Housing and Community Development and was able to alert us of some upcoming grant opportunities. It's the Senate Bill Two Planning Grant Program. If we are successful getting our housing element updated, we'd be eligible to seek funds through this grant program. And what I was talking to, to Mr. Metcalf about was, you know, some of the things that we're trying to accomplish with our comprehensive general plan update, specific to creating new opportunities for housing. And he was very positive in that if we can make that obvious nexus, that link, that we would be eligible to receive up to $125,000 to help, help offset some of our costs for our general plan update. So, the, you know, I'm mentioning this as just a possibility. You know, Jim and I are talking to the state as to how, how we might frame the project to make sure that, that we have something eligible. But, again, these, the state's really good about sticking that carrot in front of you, so I just use that as an example of, of why it remains important to, to have an updated housing element. The other neat thing about working with this folks is that there's, there's a, because of past experiences, they're willing to let staff take on a pretty big role with the housing element updates. And so, that, that creates a cost savings for us. That's, I don't know, it's not always typical for, for staff to be able to take on that role in the project. A lot of times, they want full control over it because obviously we're expecting a good product out of them. So, that's another benefit for going with, with this company here. Yeah. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, just a, maybe a comment. I was recalling, as you were talking, a little over a year ago, when we kind of went out on a limb and we were deficit spending and we agreed to, to go with the grant writer. And I, I know some of us on the council took some heat for it and there was an agreement that a year later, that we would get a report saying, you know, what's been accomplished or where are we heading. And I think that, that our grant writer has superseded our expectations and we're, we're very pleased that we made that investment in our community.
Yeah, thank you for saying that.
And I also think this, well, I definitely support this proposal and that it's a pretty good bargain that we can supplement consultant work with our own staff because it saves a lot of money to do it that way and it's important to get this so that we're also eligible for some more grants. So, do you want a motion now or wait for the public?
Larry, do you have any? Did you have anything?
I just wanna make the recommendation to do the recommended action on this.
All right. Let's open it up to the public. Anybody from the public like to speak to this? Okay. I guess at this point I will entertain that motion.
We'll make a motion that we accept a staff recommendation.
I did it originally.
Yeah.
I thought Larry made the motion. Just come with it.
Yeah. Matt second, Larry goes.
Okay, there is a motion.
All right. Any further discussion? And again, I support this and we're on the right track. And I also want our staff to get experience in what they need to do. In a perfect world, I'd love for our staff to go whip this out, but I also still wanna bog it down, so.
Thank you for the thorough report.
Call for the question?
Yes. Councilmember, come.
Yes.
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 Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes. All right. Next.
Thank you. So, once again, in your packet, you have the agenda summary, the standard contract for professional services, proposal for services and, and the resolution should you choose to approve this item. So, again, we're, staff is seeking approval of, from the council to enter into a professional service contract with Atlas Planning Services, an amount not to exceed $15,000 to assist in the preparation of the general plan safety element, as well as to authorize the city manager to execute the contract, approve change orders up to a cumulative total of 10% of the total contract. Safety element, specific, well, safety element, just like the rest of the general plan outside the housing element, hasn't been updated since August 12th, 1992. And the reason that we're bringing this forward at this time, rather than as part of a more comprehensive update, is that the state has decided that they will not certify a housing element update unless it comes with a safety element that meets state standards. And there's been a number of changes in state law that makes our current safety element noncompliant with the state. Specifically, they want us to update our safety element to address wildfire and climate adaption and resiliency. So, that's not to say that they're looking for us to come up with a plan for reducing greenhouse gases. Rather, they want us to understand our vulnerabilities in a changing climate. So, we might expect more severe droughts. We might expect more severe storms. We might expect with wildfires happen, that they are going to spread faster than they typically did before. And they want us to understand how, what challenges do we face and how do we adapt to those? What we're really looking for at this point is, is just to accomplish at least the minimum that the state needs to see, but it can also identify things that we should accomplish in, in the near future. So, you have some examples of, of what some of those mandates are in your, your agenda summary. The, the gentleman with Atlas Planning Services, Aaron, and I, I can't pronounce his last name, but it's, it's there in the contract. He's, 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 no, he's, this is his niche, this is his deal. He's done it for a lot of jurisdictions. He keeps getting taken from one consulting service to the next specifically to help cities and counties and local jurisdictions deal with safety elements in, in particular. So, I'm very confident, we, I feel like negotiated a, a good price for the services that he offered. Again, he's willing to team up with staff to accomplish some of the tasks, which will, again, create some cost savings for us. This might have been a project that I otherwise would have put out for bid, but with the timeline that we're up against and the advantages that we get for meeting that timeline, that's not really a viable option, as far as I can see. And so, again, that's, that's why we're bringing this contract forward for approval tonight.
Dusty, a question. One is to reiterate that both on this item and the previous item, we had budgeted for, for these things.
Correct.
So, so it's not like we're adding more, keeping what Suprema said. We're trying to brought, brought that up. But, and I'm not a planner, so you got your general plan and is this the way, for meeting your agenda summary, this is like one component of this, as opposed to we've got the safety thing and then the whole general plan's a separate animal, or this is part of that general plan?
Yeah, safety element is one of the seven required elements of a general plan.
So, this gets us on our way of working...
This is work that we had planned and budgeted for anyways. It's just, like I said, it's, it's coming, we're requesting to get the update sooner and not be part of the larger general plan update because of the state's requirement to update as part of the housing element update.
Okay.
And thank you for mentioning that this is an item that was budgeted for.
All right. Anybody else?
That was gonna be my comment, and I have a follow-up question. Do you recall how much we budgeted?
We budgeted $200,000 for the entire general plan update.
For this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year, although we may have cut it down because it's really hard to spend that much money on a general plan in one year. So, we split, we may have split it, taken it down a little bit, but we have plenty. It was at least $120,000 for this year. The land use element of the general plan is the, will take the lion's share of it. That is a very complicated element and right now, we're sort of figuring out how to eat that elephant. To be frank, I mean, it's, it's a really big project. I know Dusty's talked to a lot of people regarding it, different jurisdictions and how they approached it. We also have ongoing discussions regarding our sphere of influence and annexation discussions, which will really shape how we do this. And so, sort of, you know, what comes first. And, and we've, we've spent hours talking about how to, how to really do the work, because we, we're gonna do an R F P and find out who the best people are to do it. And it's going to be a process that will take probably three years, so.
That's if, that's, yeah, that would be considered fast, by the way.
We gave you direction and you're following, the council gave you direction and you're following through, so, thank you.
Cindy, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment in regards to you mentioning that this might have been an item that you would put out for bid, and I had asked about that in my meeting with Stephanie. I think that the relatively small cost of this makes it such that, had you put up to bid and perhaps gotten a lower price, the time that it would take you, the staff time, to actually go through the bid process, doesn't seem like it would be worth any savings that we could realize a different. So, I, I'm totally fine with this. Appreciate you for saying that.
I think that's a true statement, yeah. Thank you.
So, if there's anything else I ask, if there anybody in the public would like to comment on this? You're in silence, I bring it back up here for a motion.
Make the motion to approve the staff recommendation regarding the contract with, what do they call it?
Atlas.
Atlas, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Off the vote, calls, man?
Senator Klein?
Yes.
Robert Gibbs?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransby?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes. And just so you know, folks out there, that on some items, we've always initially, if it's a money item, we'll do a roll call vote. Vote if it's not a, not a money thing, maybe a policy thing that's kind of not controversial, then we'll do kind of a voice vote and do it that way. So, you're wondering why we jump through these hoops, so it should be a learning moment for the public also. All right, and I forgot, two of our folks, not forgot, but anything from Human Resources?
Anything?
Anything from our finance director? Since we've been spending money like crazy tonight.
Yes, I do have updates.
All right.
Yeah. Probably what you needed.
Please, please have any...
Just give the little bit update on the audit for the last fiscal year, 17, 18 fiscal year, and then we're at last stage and we should finish wrapping up by this week and then audit and write a report. Yeah, so I want me right now, a couple spreadsheets to do. Another one is the mid-year start on first week of February and then, so, like you mentioned earlier, for council members' travel expense and all of that, so that will be you to think about if you're gonna have more travel this year, this fiscal year. And also, by now, you should know with your next fiscal year, where you're gonna go. Normally, you would know the location by now, yeah. Also, the 1920, the annual budget is starting kick on on March 8th. And so, right now, I said, I already had, we just had a staff meeting this morning and all the senior staff is already noticed and I push out this year the wish list form and then say, if you want anything added on, wish list, and then that's due on April 1st. So, everything have their milestone deadlines, so give us, or your council, and to think about it, is what we propose and, you know, especially wish lists. So, how are we gonna find those wish lists? It's highly important to the community, to the residents and that nature. Yeah, that's my update.
Chris, do you have anything?
Anything, ready, soon. Anything? I do want...
Here, you jump up here. Dusty, at some point, but go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Gonzalez, council members. I should have spoke up, but it's too late. You guys already voted on your salaries. I just wanted to say, where I came from, the members got paid $5,000 bucks a month.
Wow.
And so, I don't think you guys should feel embarrassed and ashamed or anything. You, you guys need to be recognized that, you know, you, you sacrificed a lot. I know it's a small community, but we need you and we appreciate you. Building-wise, coenforcement-wise, everything's going good.
All right, thank you. All right. Yes, at this point, city council, committee, boards, agency reports? Larry, do you have anything?
Is this for the recommendations?
Boards?
Boards and agencies.
Boards and agencies. I have nothing. I'm gonna do the recommendations when we get here. Okay.
Oh, okay. There has not been a meeting of the Solid Waste Committee for, or agency. The next one isn't until February. We right now do not have a general manager, so that's been a bit of a problem, but the staff are carrying on nobly and keeping things running with Solid Waste. But there will be more to report later.
And I remember, if I can just interject, you had brought up a, regarding Cold Creek compost?
Okay.
And I have an update, unless you want to update.
Oh, okay, well, why don't you give me yours, because you might be more up to date than me.
Well, I, I have good news regarding Cold Creek compost.
Okay.
They recently went before the Ukiah City Council that approved an increase in gate fees. After that, Solid Waste of Willets met with them, negotiated a deal at the same rate that Ukiah agreed to, and that's $36, $36 a ton.
A ton, I think.
A ton, which is quite, was an increase from $27 a ton. And so, that's gonna be coming to council probably in late February.
Okay. So, you have slightly more. I, I know that, that Cold Creek finally was able to work with the different, there's four different haulers...
Yes.
...in the county, and so, it's a little complicated. And especially without having a, a general manager, M. Swaffett. I didn't know whether we were gonna actually ask for a, an increase in the fees to our customers, because I thought, but anyway, we will deal with that when it comes to us.
When I talked to Jerry Ward of Solid Waste of Willets, he said he is trying to work it to minimize the pass-through. But he said there will be, I mean, he doesn't see how you can't when, with, as a dramatic engagement.
Okay. All right. So, that's on the Solid Waste front. On E D F C, we had a meeting on January 10th and I took notes out of our six pages of our minutes, but I think there's several things that, that our council and our public should know about. One of them is that there've been some changes on the membership of E D F C, which is Economic Development and Financing Committee, Commission, which is a nonprofit that handles a lot of economic development and, and loans in both Mendocino and Lake County. John Hascheck and Ted Williams are now the Board of Supervisors representatives to E D F C. And a new member is Minerva Flores, who I believe is with the Mendocino College, and she comes very highly recommended. The Ukiah representative is now Shannon Riley, and she mentioned quite a few things going on that affect the city of Ukiah. And they, they have three Rails to Trails or Rails with Trails projects, and they think that they are also part of the Great Redwood Trail. And I'm not sure whether there's a definition, but apparently that there is the idea of a trail that goes all the way from the Bay Area to, to the North Coast. But the part that starts in Willets is clearly the most important part. They, they also are gearing up for trails through Ukiah. They have three different projects. And that Senator McGuire is convening a, a series of inclusive meetings to get feedback from all the players involved. City of Ukiah also has just approved a merger of their Chamber of Commerce, their Main Street Group, and their Visit Willets Group.
Visit Willets?
Visit, I'm sorry. Visit Ukiah. Sorry. They have a Visit Ukiah group, sorry. It just came out like that. Those two words. They, so that was interesting, and they foresee having some efficiencies, less overhead, more money for their projects instead of for three different groups all kind of administering different things. So, that might be something we are looking at for Willets. The Palace Hotel went up for auction, nobody bid. However, it is now, it is now under the control of a particular bank and they are able to, like, cut deals or something, so they're hoping that there will be progress for the Palace Hotel, which is a historic building. Fort Bragg also mentioned that Harvest Market has bought a portion of the old mill site out on the bluffs there, right opposite the Safeway in Fort Bragg, and that, they're excited about that. Two new loans were approved at the very end of 2018. Right now, the loan portfolio that is out, in other words, loans that are out in the community is, from E D F C, is $1.65 million, but they still have available another $1.4 million. So, we are, E D F C is looking to loan money to qualifying businesses. It's January thirty-first, and it'll be right here in our community center, and they're expecting, I think, a hundred people. They're having a lot of city representatives, and business representatives, and Board of Supervisor members, and so forth, so they're expecting that to be a launch for a whole series of activities to promote economic development in our county, and to create basically a strategic plan. They are looking at the possibility of CDBG grants for improving internet access, especially targeting low-income areas and remote areas. The Wool Mill Project, they have towards the end of this month to get approval of the investors in that project to basically forego any interest payments for, I think, two years, or maybe even more than two years, to enable the Wool Mill folks to get on their feet. It's been, the project met a bunch of really difficult delays, and if they had been forced, if EDFC were forced to pay their investors back as originally contracted, they would have had to foreclose on that business entirely, and EDFC probably would have gone bankrupt in the process. So, we're trying to restructure that, give them time to recoup the Wool Mill Project. They also have a second quarter report, which this is a draft of, but I think it's online at edfc.org, and that is a countywide sort of where we stand economically. They look at sales, they look at what kind of businesses are moving in, employment, and all that stuff, and it also reports on EDFC's activities. So, if anyone wants to look at their quarterly report, it's online. Oh, and they're also hiring a part-time staff person to assist with, and that person needs to have computer skills and some financial savvy to just help them keep their heads above water. And they're also exploring the possibility of loans and/or grants for fire suppression activities in our county. Their next meeting is February fourteenth. I just thought a lot of that was of great interest, so I took notes on it for your benefit. So, that's my report.
Can I just ask what time the summit is? That's the date of the prayer breakfast.
I know. It was said too.
It's from twelve to four-thirty.
It's right after the prayer breakfast.
Yes.
Two hours after it is.
Yeah, so you can go have the prayer breakfast, and then you can come to the economic summit. And they're both here, right?
They're both here, in the same room?
Yeah.
Yes. It's gonna be interesting.
Yeah.
Because in the evening, we usually have the prayer, not this year?
Not doing that this year.
Only the morning this year?
No.
What a bummer, okay.
Okay, well, I assume that they had made a reservation with you a long time ago?
Well, then, take care.
That's good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple things. I'm requesting of council that on February twenty-eighth, that we allow a short period of time for the Visit Willets presentation. We'd like to recap the 2018 accomplishments and showcase what our 2019 endeavors are, so the community can be informed of what we've got.
February twenty-seventh meeting.
Twenty-seventh, thank you. Got it out there. And then, the next one was Revite Ed. We met, Greta and I, and city planner, and other members of the community met this week, and we're taking back up the idea with the sign committee. Jerry had done it before, and now I've kind of been cast into that role, so we're gonna be discussing signs. It's on Monday, February, must be the twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-fifth, at four o'clock here in the council chambers. Is that right, Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Say that again, Monday?
Monday, February twenty-fifth, so anybody who would like to, from the community that would like to come and help give some input on signage.
What time?
Four, no, three-thirty?
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty, my mistake. Thank you for that correction.
And Greta, you will be attending with that one?
No, that's the sign subcommittee.
Okay, so you're, okay, so I just wanna make sure it's.
But it's open to anybody, the more participation, the better, and.
Just wanna make sure if more of us show up that.
Yeah, we want your, we want feedback from the community. And then, at the Revite Ed meeting, and I'm sure Greta will have something to add to this too, we had discussion on things from the sidewalk pavers to, new discussion again on the Highway twenty idea, improving the feasibility of better utilizing that lot, that property, that grassy area along there. We didn't get deep into discussions, just briefly discussed it, and I think we've got it for further discussion at a later date. And then, Visit Willets has secured a piece of art from the Mendocino Arts Council that has been generously stored for us over at Spare Time Supply, and so we'll be soliciting some input about where we might want to place that piece of artwork, and then bringing it before the council for approval on where we might place that. And that was it for boards and committees.
One question, is the sign subcommittee not just the billboard, but signage within?
Signage in general.
Okay.
Yes. But coming up with a, we're working further on the theme, refining it, coming up with concrete numbers, how much it will cost to put up different types of signage, and really getting buyback, buy-in from the community as to, this is what we want it to look like, and making sure that it really feels like what's comfortable for our community.
We talked about previous meetings, were those signs called dusty?
Wayfarers.
Wayfining, that's it, yes, so.
We're still going down the path where the sign committee had gone before. It's just firming up the numbers and coming up with a more concrete written plan that can move forward.
Which would be nice, 'cause as we approach our budget, to see what we can or can't do in the city.
Yeah.
So, Greta?
I sit on two committees. I sit on the Revite Ed Committee with Suprina, and I sit on the Caltrans Ad Hoc Committee. Both of those have met since the last council meeting. The Caltrans Committee met last Monday. We discussed how the Main Street project is going, leading up to relinquishment. We did, as Stephanie mentioned earlier, learn from Caltrans that the piano key striping in the bike lanes, those are those big thick white lines that run perpendicular to the bike lanes. You see them at every intersection and every driveway along Main Street in the three-block region of downtown. It turns out that those are not, according to state standard. So, Caltrans has given us the option to either remove them completely or to redo them. So, we were kind of hashing out what that might look like. I just wanted to make sure the public understands that was not a city mistake, and city funds are not being used to correct that problem. So, we're hoping to have a resolution on that soon. Not a proper resolution, but a resolving of the problem. Let's see, I think that's about it from Caltrans. Revite Ed was just this, last week?
This week.
This weekend.
I know.
The only thing I wanted to add to that was that the sign committee will be meeting, and then the other subcommittee is the beautification committee. We had previously been tasked with choosing street trees for downtown, helping make recommendations to staff into the council. Our next thing that we'll be taking up, it looks like, will be that strip of grass, the city park along Highway twenty that Suprina just mentioned, and we're looking at how to enhance that so that it can be more user-friendly, and potentially have travelers who are coming from Fort Bragg back through our community recognize that it's a place to stop, stretch their legs, maybe have some parking there available, some kind of signage to indicate that, you know, there's a downtown portion as well as an uptown portion, what people might find in Willets to visit and appreciate. So, we're gonna be looking at how to make suggestions to that. So, that's kind of, I think, all I have for Revite Ed.
When does the beautification subcommittee?
We have not yet set a date for that, so. We also, one thing I did want to add, we do have an opening on the Revite Ed Committee for a community member, so anybody who's interested should contact City Hall and fill out an application. That person would be a volunteer who would come to these meetings. We typically meet quarterly, and they are usually on a Tuesday or Wednesday afternoon, three-thirty-ish to five-ish. So, anybody interested should give Kathy a call.
Right.
Jerry, I'm next. Actually, the Redwood Trail is just from Willets, which it's in the state statute that it will be from Willets, well, actually, there's a mile mark on the railroad, and it starts at the crossing of Highway one oh one and the railroad out north of town, and it goes all the way to Eureka, and, but it's part of the trail that starts in San Diego and goes all the way to, going to be, goes all the way to Canada, and that will be in sections, whatever they're gonna do, but that's where it goes.
Thank you.
And also, I was asleep when you asked me this, I went to the Measure B thing today, and it was business as usual, and nothing was concluded that came up with any kind of recommendation for the supervisors. And we have a new person that is head of the Measure B, and it's Ace Brandon, and he's a doctor in Ukiah and in Willets, and did a really good job today.
He's chairing it, yeah?
Yeah, I think it's Ace Berish.
Berish.
Okay, thank you.
I had a question for, I guess, somebody. Because there was a letter to the editor regarding those bike, piano stripes, whatever we wanna call it, I'm wondering if we can make sure that there's a public information available that it was Caltrans's mistake, and that they're gonna do something to fix it?
We have asked Caltrans to make some sort of.
Press release?
Press release, and they are determining whether they will do that.
Is that something we can do?
We can actually do, I would like us to do it jointly, and I will continue to try to work with Caltrans to get some sort of a joint statement out there, once we get a final resolution, 'cause we think we found a good resolution, but they're not sure whether they want to pay for it, as usual. So, but we're working, we're working on it, so.
Okay.
Even if it was their mistake.
So, once it's resolved, then there will be.
Because I, we explained to them that it really is confusing for people to put down all this paint, and then all of a sudden, it's gonna be ground up.
Yeah.
And it doesn't look very good, and.
And it has to be removed. I mean, they, there's no bones about that.
Yeah, they're not letting us keep it.
Now, we're trying to figure out how to, how to get some safety features worked back in, but not have it be on the city's dollar.
Exactly.
Okay.
I just like it to be public.
Yes, absolutely, we, yes.
You know, normally, I go to LAFCO, but my term in LAFCO expired at the December meeting, was my last meeting. But the mayors all meet, the city select committee, we met earlier, and the way it was agendized, apparently, there was two openings for LAFCO and an alternate. The alternate, Steve Ignacio, the mayor of Point Arena, became the new member of LAFCO. There was an issue regarding, again, that other position, and so, the decision amongst the mayors was to hold over the alternate position. I'm still interested in serving on LAFCO, but obviously, I have to convince my fellow mayors that I should have either an alternate or a regular spot on there, but kind of what I wanted to put out also to you guys, and, 'cause we all serve on some things where, you know, we're there as either a city representative or just there because they want a representative of Willets or a representative of Ukiah. You don't necessarily get extra benches in Willets because you're on the MTA Committee, and when you're on LAFCO, same thing, we don't get our sphere of influence or our annexation anywhere near. I think there's a misconception from different city folks, because they get on city councils and stuff, and think, if I get on to LAFCO, I'll get our annexation through any quicker. It's like anything else we serve on, you're just a member on there, and when it comes to LAFCO law, you're supposed to be a commissioner for LAFCO, not there as a Willets person. What you bring to that is your experience as either a businessperson, council member, former cop, or whatever, and you're there for LAFCO as a commissioner. And I just kind of wanted to throw that out to the public, because there are a lot of things we do, whether it's EDFC or whatever, that you're not there to get Willets a better or whatever, 'cause the mission of what we're doing sometimes is to be there as a public or the public representative for those boards or committees that we do.
That's a defining difference between boards that we sit on and committees that we sit on.
Yes.
When we're sitting on a city committee, we're serving the, we're acting in the city's best interest for the people. When we're serving on a board, we kind of have a dual role, but our primary role is to the board that we're sitting on.
Yeah, but in a lot of those, what happens is, like you said, the, when you're doing the local Revite Ed Committee, you're there as the city council member for Willets, and you're representing constituents, but when you're there on a regional board or whatever, you're there usually not there, you're representing Willets, but only insofar as that you're there as a body performed by Willets, but you're there following the rules of that commission. So, I kind of wanted to throw that out there, just for you folks and anybody out there in the public, that that's there, 'cause I encountered that at this group, or I think a lot of folks, and I was there too, when I first got on, first year as mayor, I thought I was there to try and get us a seat there and get us the best, and I guess, the best annexation or the best whatever we could out of LAFCO, and it doesn't work that way. And I think we found that out. You learn a lot when you sit up here sometimes, that you walk in with one point of view, and then you realize your role is slightly different than what you thought. You still bring something to it, but I kind of wanted to bring that. So, throwing that out there, we're supposed to meet on the thirty-first, after the prayer breakfast, gonna hustle down to Ukiah, and we're gonna do another city select committee. And I think we put out there that there was also an alternate position for Sonoma Clean Power, if somebody was interested in that. I think I told Kathy to throw that out there. We did fill the one position, and I was with a council member from Point Arena, but there's still an alternate position for that out there from this area. Apparently, Ukiah doesn't sit on it, because they have their own power, but Willets and Ukiah do have a, we're representing.
You said Ukiah doesn't, but Ukiah, I mean, Willets, Fort Bragg, and Point Arena, are there?
No, I think it's Willets and Ukiah. No, I said, yeah, Point Arena does, I'm sorry. Point Arena does, but Ukiah isn't a part of Sonoma Clean Power.
I think I told Kathy I was somewhat interested, and I, but it's an alternate position.
It's an alternate position.
So, you attend, if you, but you aren't a regular voting member unless someone else is absent?
Yeah, so, and currently, again, it would be the Point Arena rep, so if he wasn't, and I believe the meetings are down in Santa Rosa, so. And I aired, and I, when I looked at the agenda for this city select committee, I should have brought that up originally, and maybe somebody would have been interested in the full position, I could have brought it up, so I apologize to everybody here. I was thinking LAFCO when I was thinking airport commission, that you, they would have somebody that had airport knowledge, so. League of Cities, technically I admit, but I'm on the policy committee, I brought back to all of you some information regarding retirement. That was something that was, Dr., they did a brief, even though I sat on the Public Safety Committee, they did kind of a summary of the budget, summary of some legislation, and reference public safety, one of the things they did bring up, and I think it's, they just advised us that, and again, how things change right away, is that the California Office of Administrative Law met regarding the final rules regarding cannabis, and one of the rules they talked about, that just went in fact, is that delivery of products. So, if there is a, maybe you're a city that outlawed all cannabis at all in your city, apparently, the state says, guess what, if hypothetically, San Francisco or Anaheim wants to deliver into your city, they can. And you don't really, I think the take the league has taken is that they want local control. They, and I think there may be, not sure if there'll be litigation, but there's gonna obviously be some opposition, or at least the league will be trying to get behind, because some cities are in a position where, like us, they've passed a cannabis ordinance, but not maybe allowed all of it. Some have allowed dispensaries, but nothing else, and all sorts of things, but some have banned everything, and I think the league's position is that each city should be able to determine what happens within its boundaries, so. be able to determine what happens within its boundaries, so. That, that was something that came up. But again, this is kind of hot off the presses, it had been introduced a while back, but it had just come back that the state had ruled on it. So whether you ban it or not, it, it'll come to your city whether you want it or not, so. Okay. That's what I had. And council member reports and recommendations?
Last meeting, Madge brought it up about cannabis, and I am interested as far as the city goes with cannabis, so I would like that put on the agenda for next time, or for whenever we can get it on.
Well, can I put on the agenda?
And, and I'm, and I'm going to maybe make a suggestion.
Okay.
I know I mentioned during the last meeting that we have a couple of things we need to talk about. Number one, we passed our tax in Measure J, and therefore, part of that tax is we need to come back and pass a resolution instituting the tax. That we plan to come forward, and also setting some rates, and that's going to come forward in the second meeting in February. Along with that, there have been some changes. I mentioned there have been changes in some regulations, and, and council member, Council Member Madge also said that she's interested in, in bringing this, some discussions about the fact that there have been some changes in the regs and the laws, and we kind of need to look at what we have and whether it matches the, the state, what's going on in the state. And we need to sort of shape what we're going to talk about. We also had a request from a council member discussing some, how council is going to be involved in that, and it, it created some, a lot of discussion between Jim and I and that council person, and there was, seemed to be a desire that we talk about it as a group. And I was going to suggest that we do so, we have, talk about it, maybe in a special meeting, to talk about what we want to see staff work on, and regarding cannabis, and how the council might be involved or not involved in that, and, and sort of what the appropriate level is in accordance with current laws and standards and best practices. And I think that that should come back soon to sort of shape that discussion. I also wanted to say that the, the first meeting in February is actually a meeting in which I am going to be gone at a, at a, at a conference. Our deputy city manager will also be gone at a, at a different conference. Dusty Julie, our community development director, will also be gone at a conference. So far, we have nothing agendized for that. Oh, and then our HR director will also be gone for that. And we, we don't have anything scheduled for the first meeting in February, so I would really suggest that we not have that meeting, and perhaps have a short special meeting next week to sort of discuss some of the parameters of, of some cannabis, what we want to see staff work on in a future report on...
I, could I also...
Does that, does that make sense?
It, it does, but I also kind of, and again, because of the email that was copied all of us, I, I had some concerns regarding, and I guess this is where I want Jim's input, attorney-client sort of privilege regarding what is disseminated and how it's disseminated, so that, having been in my former role where I was always careful what an attorney gave to me or how it was presented, I want to be careful that we are not somehow disseminating information that we should or shouldn't. That's a concern I have.
You know, Ken, I'm not sure whether you're talking about applicant information?
Yeah, whether between that and any, I guess I'm concerned with you issue an opinion to staff. There were times when, when I was police chief, you would issue something to me as the police chief regarding a question I had, but it wasn't necessarily meant for the council or anybody else, it was meant for...
Right.
Me, and, and I'm concerned that depending on what gets handed out to who, that we know what our role is here, because I may be curious, just like I'm curious about a lot of things in the community, but again, in my former role, I knew that there was a need to know and a right to know, and they were two separate animals.
And I guess what I see, what, what I wanted to bring up is, is that, that topic actually would be brought to a special meeting, and not put Jim on the spot right now...
No, I...
And, and sort of let him sort of gather his thoughts and, and talk about that at a special meeting, maybe next week.
That's fine.
Does that...
Sure.
Did we want to set that now, or just, again, and again, folks, the reason we can't kind of start discussing that sort of right now is that we didn't agendize it, so for everybody kind of wondering, what are they talking about? We got to set a special meeting to talk about the stuff we can't talk about today. I know, it's government and all that.
So, I don't know if we need it to be in the form of a motion, but I would move, if you want it in a motion, that we cancel the meeting of February 13th, but that we schedule a special meeting for Wednesday evening, January 30th, 6:30.
I have an eye doctor appointment earlier that day, so I come in with my eyes dilated, don't think I invoked something I shouldn't have, since we're talking cannabis or something.
For clarification, it's a special meeting, will there be any action items on the agenda?
I think it's, it's discussion, it's for discussion and giving staff some direction.
Directions to staff.
Okay. I just want to be really, really clear, because if there's any type of action, I don't want, later on, I don't want to see the agenda, because I really feel like with this topic, that before, when we took action, we gave the public lots of time for input, and so if there's action, there needs to be time for that.
I agree with you. I think this should be for discussion and direction to staff, so that we can then bring an action item, and with public input.
And, and will that not necessarily be the only, or would that be the only item?
If, if something else needs to come up, it could. Right now, I have nothing on deck. I have a lot on deck for the second meeting in February, is going to be a very full agenda.
So I have a, I have a recommendation, too. Is this now the, the time?
Well, actually, let's, let's go with Madge's first. So you're...
Does it relate to the...
Motion to...
No.
Okay. So, motion to drop the January 13th meeting and add this...
February 13th.
Sorry, February 13th meeting and add the 30th.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I think I did.
Okay, okay, thank you. Motion, so I get any further discussion, anybody from the public like that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a time for the special meeting?
6:30.
6:30.
Okay, and then, this recommendation relates to, to the council's role, and that the council's role is to provide for government and management of its area at the local level. Specifically, councils are required to act as representatives, to be informed, and responsible decision-makers. And I think that it's time to visit the council's policy, it would appear to me, on what, what knowledge the council should, what information the council should have available to them. There's the Public Records Act, which spells out what's available to any individual in the community. The California Supreme Court held that openness in government is essential to the functioning of democracy, and that implicit in the democratic process is the notion that government should be accountable for its actions. In order to verify accountability, the court held that individuals must have access to government files. The court noted that the Public Records Act declared that access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business is a fundamental and necessary right of every person in the state. In addition, the voters in 2004 added a provision to the California Constitution that states that the people have a right of access to information concerning the conduct of the people's business, and therefore, the writings of public officials and agencies have to be open to public scrutiny. So I think what I'd like to ask of the council is that we make sure that our website has full disclosure. I know there's a, if you search, you can find something on the Public Records Act, but many cities have a tab where you can actually find it a little easier. I would ask that maybe we have more transparency on our website. And, and then also revisit the council's policy on what council members have access to. Council certainly should have the same access to information as any member of the public. And if the council is going to be an oversight and policymaking body, I would argue that we should visit the policy and ensure that if the city's attorney is giving advice to any member of staff to, on a topic that's relevant to a decision that we're making here at the dais, that we should, we should most certainly be looking at that information, because that can be very pertinent to, to, to how it affects the community. Understanding that there is some information that is sensitive, that we need to have a discussion about where that line is, so that we are fulfilling our responsibility and protecting information.
I would think that that, that concern could be part of our discussion on our special meeting.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Do we have anything else?
I have a report.
Go ahead.
So, last week, I attended the League of California Cities New Council Members and Mayors Academy. It was held in Sacramento at the Hyatt Regency. The city graciously sent me there for three days, and my brain was filled completely to the point of overload. I took sessions on everything from the council member's role, the city manager's role, fiscal oversight. We learned about CEQA, we learned about land use planning, the new legislative agenda, the new budget from the governor, all kinds of information. I met council members from all over the state, city managers from several cities of sizes similar to ours, and it was incredible. I am so appreciative of the opportunity to go and learn, and very proud of our city. I did learn there that there are some cities in really bad shape. Fiscal mismanagement, clashes between council members, clashes between council members and city staff. It can be ugly out there, and I'm proud to say that our city functions well. And it, it just made me feel good about what I was coming home to. So, thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that I can bring some of what I learned to the next four years here.
Good. We enjoyed it, too, when we went.
It's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
For the public, if anyone who doesn't know, the League of California Cities is an advocacy organization that essentially, I think Jerry mentioned it earlier, their biggest goal is local control. And so they work at the state level to make sure that the legislative agenda that's passed at the state level doesn't harm our cities and towns in California. And they do everything they can to make sure that we get to decide the policies that work for our communities regardless of our size. So it's a great organization, and, yeah, it's appreciated.
Do we have anything else? I guess I'll move to good and welfare. Again, Edie's birthday is coming up, and the Rotary is going to be doing their, say, annual, but it's always subject to crab, and last I heard, it's this Friday and Saturday, they'll be set up downtown selling crabs, and I think I pull, I'm pulling the, one of the Saturday shifts out there, cooking and selling crabs. And that is a fundraiser for the scholarship fund that Rotary does for the high school and the other, both, I guess, all the high schools in town, they do that, so that's one thing there. Anybody else have any good?
Just want to acknowledge that we saw some Boy Scouts in the audience, learning about local government, let them know that we noticed them, and glad to see them here.
And, oh, and I guess there is a prayer breakfast coming up on the 31st, so I'm glad that the hospital does that and brings that here. I heard they had to, kind of because of scheduling, they had to change it, so it's not the day of the national prayer breakfast, but they always bring great speakers and kind of bring the different faiths together in the community. I think that's the nice thing about it, whether you're of one denomination or another, or Christian, non-Christian, et cetera, that everybody's there, and it's a good, good spirit, and most of us are usually in attendance, so. All right, thank you. Have a motion to a jury?
Motion to a jury.